All right, I have a thumbs up, ladies and gentlemen. It is January the 2nd, welcome to 2024. We're delighted to have you here. I will call this meeting to order. Our first order of business will be to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by an invitation by Alderman Vaughn, and then a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hold on, if you would, please.
Good evening, Father. Good evening, Lord Jesus. Good evening, Holy Spirit. Good evening, heavenly family. Father God, again as a few of your handmaid servants that you allowed us to enter to a brand-new year. Father God, praying that what all behind us we leave behind. Father God, we just thank you so much because you as a God that sit high and look low, heaven has died, seed has died, foot stood. Now, God, I pray that you would just continue to bless this mayor and this board and all our achievements, Father God, that we will be able to find whatever we try to do, but we do it in the name of Jesus. We thank you so much for being our God and we your servants, being our Father and we your children. God, we thank you for controlling our destiny, not leaving us in the hand of no man. Now, I pray, God, that you will bless us in every decision that we make. God, it will glorify you. We pray for this mayor, this board, and all the department here and all the city employees of this city. We thank you for what you are doing and that you're gonna do. Father God, it's in the mighty name of Jesus we pray. Amen.
Let's get, thank you, everyone, for being here. We're looking forward to a wonderful 2024. And so our first order of business for the board will be to approve the official agenda with consented items. And we did not have a work session, so I took the liberty of putting items on consent, which certainly may come off. So any changes, Alderman Rupp, to either the agenda or the consented items?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Alderman Brooks?
No, ma'am, thanks.
Alderman Beatty?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Alderman Sistrum? Vice Mayor Perkins?
No, ma'am, ma'am, thank you.
Alderman Vaughn?
No, ma'am, ma'am, thanks.
All right. If not, I need a motion to approve the official agenda with the consented items.
So moved.
I have a motion from Alderman Rupp. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Brooks. All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And just as a point of order, for those of you who might not know, we are down to six aldermen because Alderman from Ward 1, Ben Carver, resigned over the holidays and is now a supervisor for District 1, I believe it is. So we are happy to congratulate him, but we are now a little bit fewer than we were before. So that explains the one seat that's vacant. I will read the consented agenda items before we move forward. So consideration of the minutes of the December 15th, 2023 work session of the Mayor and Board of Aldermen of the City of Starkville. Under Board Business, declare Ward 1 Alderman's seat vacant and set city election for Ward 1 Alderman for Tuesday, February 13th of 2024. Under Airport, we have consideration of the lowest quote for taxiways crack seal from Sunbelt Sealing, Inc., in the amount of $66,000. Under Engineering, item 1 is consideration of approving the Engineering Services Agreement with Atwell Gint, P.A., for the electrical redesign of the Highway 182 Revitalization Project. 2 is consideration approval of Neil Schaefer, Inc., as a preferred consultant to provide professional services for the Stark Road and Hospital Road Extension Project. Under Finance Administration, we have item 2 is request approval to declare listed items as surplus property and sell to the highest bidder on golf deals and then discard or sell directly to a scrap dealer. Under Human Resources, we have request authorization to hire Bonnie Brumley Edwards as a permit technician in the Community Development Department. 2 is request authorization to hire Don Tavious Howard as a commercial driver in the Sanitation and Environmental Services Department. 3 is request authorization to hire Trevon Outlaw and Darian King as sanitation workers in the Sanitation and Environmental Services Department. 4 is consideration of approving the Revised Personnel Manual for the City of Starkville effective January 3rd, 2024. Under Parks, we have consideration of canceling the remainder of the Construction Administration contract with Kimmely Horn for the Needmore Center. And 2 is consideration of approval of the Professional Services Contract with Architectronics, P.L.L.C., in the amount of $10,000 for the Needmore Center project. Under Utilities, we have two items. Approval of Work Authorization 24-01 with Clearwater Consultants, Inc. to provide engineering services for the Influent Pump Station Rehabilitation. And 2 is accept emergency authorization consistent with Presidential Determination Number 20-22, 2022-19, from Howard Industries, Inc. to purchase two 100 KVA Transformers in the amount of $41,514. And that concludes the consent agenda items.
Thank you, Mayor.
It's my pleasure. Under Announcements and Comments, the best I've got tonight is just being looking forward to 2024 and all the good things that it will bring. So I am excited to share this coming year with this board and all the things that we've got in anticipation of improvements around town. So Alderman Rupp, anything from you, sir?
No, ma'am.
Alderman Brooks?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Alderman Beatty? Alderman Sistrum?
Yes, I'd like to encourage anyone who's interested in running for the vacant seat for Alderman Ward 1 to freshen up on what's required. You have to live there. You have to have lived there for two years before this and to go through the filing process with the city clerk. You can pick up forms from her. Because it is a special election, it's a really short turnaround. Qualifications will begin in the morning and run through January 22nd. There is a petition process because everybody has to run as an independent. Nobody declares a party for this particular election. So you have to have 50 signatures, appropriate signatures, to have your name put on the ballot. But it's a great opportunity to be of service to the community if you're interested. And Ms. Harden, our city clerk, will help you if you have any questions. And the election is February 13th again.
Anything else?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Perkins?
No, ma'am, ma'am, thank you.
Alderman Vaughn?
No, ma'am, ma'am, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, our next item on the agenda is Citizen Comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to have three minutes to share your thoughts and comments with the Board of Aldermen. We do not normally respond back to you. This is mostly a one-way conversation, so sharing your thoughts. Mr. Turner, welcome to 2024. Nice to see you.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Have a New Year, Day 1. And my name is Alton Ward 7. And to the mayor, to the police chief, to the fire chief, to sanitation. All right, we want things sanitation and Day 1 that gave us that schedule and made it better for us. That, all right, we didn't have to try to run and check the government truck. We thank for the schedule, think that you guys threw in, it wasn't stressful. Lieutenant, the Nemo Center is very much on people's mind. We're, the election, Lieutenant, the polling play that we got, that is kind of stressful for a lot of people. The Brush Harbor Cemetery, all right, we need to let the deceased be in peace if we can get a, do not, I mean, no trespassing sign for the cemetery. And that just some thoughts of the people.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Anyone else?
Good evening to the board and the mayor and Happy New Year. My name is Patty Drapola, and due to redistricting, I'm now a resident of Ward 4. So it feels a little different up here, but I'm a proud resident of Ward 4. But tonight, I'm here to represent the Oktibihaw County Branch of the NAACP. As many of you may already know, the holiday for Dr. Martin Luther King's birthday is Monday, January 15th, 2024. I would like to announce the celebration and festivities that the Oktibihaw NAACP branch has. We will have a march starting at 1:30 on Washington Street, turn at the jail, the same route that we've used, and end up at Unity Park. Then at Unity Park, we will have a program of speeches, remembrances, and songs. Our keynote speaker will be Joe Helen Walker, our newly-elected tax assessor and the first African-American and the first African-American woman elected to this position. We will also have welcomes from the City of Starkville, from the County Board of Supervisors, the members of the clergy, and other significant cultural and civic organizations. We will also present the names of the honorees to be unveiled by the Starkville Unity League on the Wall of Honor at Unity Park. So we are completing the necessary paperwork that the city requires for the permit and the security of this event. And I want to say on behalf of the NAACP for Oktibihaw County that we appreciate the support of the Board of Aldermen, the Starkville Mayor, the Starkville Police Department, and other supporting agencies in assisting in sponsoring this event for a truly notable American. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Drapola. Anyone else?
Man Chris Taylor, Ward 7, Alderman Vaughn. Mayor, board, Happy New Year, everyone. Hey, the two honorees for the NAACP, I mean, for the Unity Wall is George Washington Charles. He's a Confederate. He fought with the Confederate. So he need to do a little history. He fund Confederate Army. He'll take his master. So he rescued his massacre, so he got like the cross sabers on his headstone up there. And the next one is Ernest Jones. He had the shoe pop, I mean, the shoe plays up there. Now, Alderman Sistrum, now, out of 50 signatures, does it have to be from Ward 1? Okay, so it had to be, even though hopefully everyone know they've been redistricted. So president who just got in there, they still good, right?
It's people who live in Ward 1 right now.
Right.
And if I were going to be gathering those 50 signatures, I'd probably get a couple of extra ones just in case somebody signed inappropriately.
Full understand, just waiting on some phone calls. And the next one was, oh, okay, that one, that one. Oh, that's it. Happy New Year.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Anyone else? Anyone else? All right, seeing none, we'll close it for Citizens Comments. We do have one public appearance this evening. Dr. Arrender, you are up, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, board and mayor and Chief Ballard. And I also want to give a special thanks to Lisa for her efforts in helping me navigate this process. I have prepared comments tonight, so I will share those so that the preacher doesn't get long-winded and maybe speaks with clarity. I know, so.
Ms. Harden will keep the time.
Start.
Ms. Harden will help you with that.
As most of you are aware, Bridgeway Church, our church, was brought together just over a year ago by the merging of Starkville Community Church and Calvary Baptist Church with one mission in mind, to build gospel bridges in our community and beyond. We became Bridgeway Church in order to help connect people with God, with the God who had created us and who loved us enough that He came in the person of Jesus Christ to be with us and to willingly give His life so that we might enjoy a relationship with Him. We also have desired, from the very first day of the creation of our new church, to be very, very community-involved and civically-minded and have made that a priority in our church in all that we do. In the last 13 months, this is a list of some of the things that we have done as a church in our community. We have handed out 656 bags of food, reaching 150-plus families with a total donation of over $15,000. We have made 55 beds for kids in Oktibihaw County and given $6,000 to the Golden Triangle Dream Center. We have sponsored multi-denominational and multicultural tables at local events like the Martin Luther King Unity Breakfast and the First Steps Clinic Gala for Life. We have sent out over 300 volunteers during our quarterly Faith in Action events with over 1,000 volunteer hours. On those Sundays when we do Faith in Action, we sing a song or two and have a short devotion, and then we just go out and serve this city. Here's what we do. Those volunteers have done such things as landscaping, repairs, cleanup at Sudeth Elementary, Hore, Henderson Ward Stewart Elementary, Overstreet Elementary, the Partnership Middle School, and Armstrong Middle School. We have done elder care service and outreach at the Goldton, at Starkville Manor, at Montgomery Gardens, at the Beehive Homes, and at Carrington. We have made care packages and delivered those to over 60 Oktibihaw County hospital staff. We have made gifts and delivered gifts to over 120 local teachers, including staff at Starkville Academy and Starkville Christian School. We have made care packages and delivered to 196 members of the MSU's New Maroon staff. We have sent thank-you notes and gifts and delivered them to 75 MSU road runners. We've had cleanup teams quarterly at Mon Creek Park, McKee Park, JL King Parks on multiple occasions. We've done multiple projects completed for the Starkville Unit of the Boys and Girls Club. We've had cleanup teams sent to the Odd Fellows and the Brush Armor, Brush Harbor Cemetery. We've organized multiple food drives for Starkville Strong. We have built and stocked care and food pantries, food closets at Henderson Ward Elementary. We have completed yard work for half a dozen local widows and shut-ins. This is really just some of the things that our members and our college students do once a quarter in our community. We share these with you not because we desire credit. In fact, we have never sought any recognition or any media coverage at all for any of this work. Instead, we share with you because we want you to know that we come to you tonight as a partner in our city. We come to you as a local church, a nonprofit that is investing thousands of dollars and thousands and thousands of hours in community service to our city. We also come because we need your help. When we brought our churches together, we anticipated that our fellowship would be about 350 to 400 people. Yet, in the year 2023, through God's grace, we have grown far beyond those expectations. We are now a fellowship of 550 to 600 people, which includes all generations and a ministry that disciples approximately 200 college students every Sunday. As a result of that growth, we have faced incredible challenges, especially when it comes to safely parking those people that are making the way to Bridgeway Church. Our immediate solution was to park 30 or 40 cars on the grass lot to the north of our church where we began some work. That plan has worked except for the rainy and wintery spring season last year when we had multiple cars, including our pastor's wife, get stuck in the mud. Our hope was to find a short-term solution that would help people continue to park safely while we work on a long-term plan that would address our current and future growth. To that end, we started work two weeks ago to level that lot we have been using and parking on and cover it with crushed limestone. Our hope was to provide better access to the area and to accommodate up to 50 vehicles and avoid the problem of getting stuck during the rainy seasons. We began work with no idea that the lot in question, and I've been the pastor there for 17 years, and I had no idea that that lot did not have the same exceptions as a place of worship that the rest of our property has. We fully intend to go through the process that we need to. We realize that we were wrong and are fully willing to go through the multiple-step process that the city has asked us to complete. However, that process, as y'all know, will take months and will cost us several thousand dollars more than we had anticipated. And if the stop-work order is left in place, it will also mean that we will have lost the ability to park anyone on that lot. Once January 21st arrives and the students return for the spring semester, that will have an immediate and detrimental effect on our ability to continue our mission as a church and our good work in the community. Much of that work coming from these students who, of their own volition, get up and come to church and then go serve in their community. We'll have vehicles spilling out into the neighborhoods behind us and along Jackson Street or wherever we can, and we'll most definitely lose the ability to continue welcoming new individuals and families that need to connect with God and others. Therefore, we are asking you, the Board of Aldermen, to waive the stop-work order and allow us to finish the work that we began in the interim and grant us a special exemption. We commit to completing the process requested by the city and have engaged the services of Pritchard Engineering toward that end and are working with them. But right now, we have an unsightly pile of dirt and a half-spread-out lot of gravel that if we could spread that out and park students, it would be a great help. I have three minutes, no, two minutes left. I thought about this. I don't want to be preachy, but let me share this. Nehemiah was in exile, and he got word by letter, he got word by people of how the people were doing in Jerusalem while he was in Babylon in exile. He was cut bare to the king. And when he got word of how things were in Jerusalem, his heart was broken. And he desired in his heart to go back and help his city. And so he began to pray. And so he began to pray and that, that he could complete this mission. In the end of his prayer, I thought about this today, he, he kind of, he, he said these words. He said, "Lord, give your servant success today by granting him favor in the presence of these, of this man." That's kind of my prayer today, that, that I might find favor in the presence of our city leaders, um, that we might continue to be a good partner in our city, continue doing the work that we are excited about doing once a quarter in our community, in our parks, and in our schools. So, we're, we're just in a, we've made a mistake, we're in a tataquandry. We've got an unsightly pile of dirt and an unsightly pile of crushed marble. I would love for it to be more slightly, and I would love for our students to have somewhere parked in the interim while we work on this process. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Arrender. All right, our next item is public hearing. We have, um, public hearing for variance twenty-three dash thirteen, and Mr. Havlin has the fluke. So, um, Mr. McCaskey has said he would step in and, and manage this particular item on
Good evening. All right, so this is going to be VA twenty-three dash thirteen, um, for a, uh, is a request on behalf of Walmart Inc. for a variance from several requirements to the access management policy at ten-ten Highway twelve west. Walmart is proposing several renovations and improvements to the building and to the site. Uh, the proposed renovations and improvements trigger the nonconformity clause in section three point seventeen, requiring the entire site to be updated to current code standards. There are four separate requests as a part of this. Request one is for the number of access points. There are currently two access points, and the applicant is requesting to keep both. Uh, so kind of the gist of that is that essentially they would only be allowed to keep one, and instead they have the two. Uh, the next request that they have is, uh, for the width of the lanes at the Easternmost driveway. Uh, the applicant is requesting to keep the width the same. Essentially, in this case, uh, I believe the maximum is going to be eighteen feet for one way, and, uh, this current one is twenty-two feet. So they're, once again, just requesting for it to remain, uh, as is currently. Uh, request number three is for the width of the Westernmost driveway. Uh, the existing driveway is fifty-four feet, which exceeds the maximum width of thirty-six feet, and again, they're just requesting that it maintains the same. And then, request number four is for the radius of the Westernmost drive. Uh, the existing, uh, driveway radius is seventy feet, which exceeds the maximum width of twenty-five feet, and yet again, uh, they're just requesting that the width be the same. Uh, this request was noticed in accordance with section three point seven point three point E. Thirty-nine property owners of record were notified directly by mail of the request. A legal ad was published in the Starkville Daily News on November twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three, and a sign was posted on the property in a conspicuous location. Uh, as of this date, the planning office has received two phone calls, uh, requesting further information for the request. They did not speak for or against, they just wanted to know about it. Um, and the sign was, let's see, uh, and at the December twentieth, twenty-twenty-three Board of Adjustments and Appeals meeting, uh, the board voted unanimously to approve, um, each of those individual requests. Uh, on this next slide, these are the, uh, six criteria for variance review and approval. If y'all have any questions, I'm happy to answer it.
Any questions of Mr. McCaskey? Any questions? All right. Uh, is applicant here?
Yes.
Do you have anything you'd like to add?
I'll just.
All right, come, come right on up, please, if you would, and give your name.
Good evening, Board, Mayor. My name is Benton Bilela, I'm with Duplantis Design Group. Uh, we are the civil engineering consultant for Walmart for this project. Um, as Lyle stated, um, the improvements to the store that we're working on, um, are, are triggering, are, uh, are triggering us to, uh, comply to the, the most recent access management policy. However, the store was, uh, originally built in two thousand and one, uh, in accordance with the, the applicable codes at the time, um, and we're essentially just asking to maintain the current, uh, the current operations at the store, uh, for the access.
Okay.
I don't have anything else, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, let's see if the board has any questions of the applicant. Anyone? Anyone? No? Alderman Beatty.
What are your move to the store? What, just upgrade? What?
Yes, sir. So the, uh, my scope, the civil, uh, the site work scope is, uh, basically just a resurfacing of the parking lot, repairing and replacing the, the pavement in the parking lot. Uh, the building renovations or in, uh, interior, uh, inter, interior remodels, and, uh, there's some exterior signage and hanging, uh, no expansion to the.
Alderman, I'm sorry, anything else, Alderman Beatty? Alderman Brooks?
So with the parking lot, will the, will it be brought into more into holder with landscaping?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We are, uh, we are fully complying with the current landscaping code. Uh, so we'll be, uh, significant landscape improvements on the, uh, landscape islands, interior median islands, so we'll be, we've been working closely with Daniel and Lyle on, on the landscaping part, so.
That's good.
Yes, sir.
You know, and if you, if you look back at that, if you narrow that drive out from fifty-four to thirty-six feet, then you're going to lose one of those lanes.
That's right.
Yeah, if somebody that goes there, traffic gets my hot button.
Yes, sir.
I, 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 I think we need three lanes there personally. If they give you two, gives you one going straight, and the center lane can go straight or turn, and, uh, turn back east, and then the outside lane that can go west.
That's right.
Yeah.
Right, and, and really, the, the intent of the original design was, uh, to accommodate the large truck traffic that the store receives, you know, daily, um, on, in addition to the out parcels that access, use these accesses as well, so.
That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? I'll echo that. I've sat in the, in any one of those lanes, and it, and it's, it's filled up, so I, I don't, don't disagree with your request at all, so. All right, it's time, you need to open it for public hearing. If you would, please step aside, and we'll see if anyone wishes to speak to this matter. Um, I'm opening this as a public hearing now. Anyone wishing to speak either for or against? Now's an opportunity, either for or against. Seeing no one, I will close it as a public hearing and entertain a motion.
Not approval.
Alderman Beatty, Alderman Brooks, sorry. Thank you, I'm sorry. Both of you have deep voices. Uh, I have a motion from Alderman Brooks. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Beatty, all right. Thank you. Any further, without further discussion? No further discussions? Uh, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries. All right. Um, and last but not least, is the claim stock it? Do I have a motion for approval?
Salute.
A motion from Alderman Brooks, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Brooks. Uh, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed?
Nay.
Nay.
All right, motion carries. And then we have, I need to read, that takes us to the end of our, Alderman Vaughn, yes you may.
What can God in direction can we give a Bridgeway on, on this, uh, waive this, uh, stop work order? What advice can we give them? What, what guidance can we give them?
Um, well, we have a process that is, I think they've been made aware of a few weeks ago, as a matter of fact, and so I'm hoping that that process can move forward, and I don't think it will be extensive, but it's just a matter of the number of things that need to be dealt with.
And they notify with the things they need to be dealt with?
Oh, yes, sir. Mm-hmm. There was an email that went out, and I think they've, they've been spoken to on several occasions several months ago, as a matter of fact, because there was, they came to us about a house or a shed, I believe it was, and we had some of those discussions with them at that point in time, so I think it's just kind of gone along, and, uh, now is the time when they just need to go through that process to, uh, make sure that it gets done.
How long a process is that?
Mr. McCaskey? I think you timed that out, did you not?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you share that with Alderman Vaughn and the rest of the board, please?
Yes, uh, do you want me to go through the entire thing?
Uh, timing-wise, I believe is the current question, so let's, let's.
Yes, okay. So the, the main portion that they're, they're having to get through that, that gates them time-wise is the special exception, and the reason why we can't necessarily speed that up is because it has to be advertised in the newspaper and then also advertised to all the people who live within the certain boundary of it. So it has to go through the, uh, Planning and Zoning, uh, Board, which would meet, uh, the second Tuesday, second Tuesday in February is when it would go at this point, because it'd have to meet those advertising times, and then it would should go to the Board of Aldermen, I believe, on the third Tuesday that month, which I think is?
Twentieth.
Twentieth, yes. So, so that is kind of the deadline they're at, um, you know, uh, because we, we have to meet the advertising requirements, because the neighboring properties have to have an opportunity to speak to any development that wasn't outright allowed by code.
Mayor, may we respond to that? I know it's, it's out of order, but.
Um, Alderman Vaughn, would you like to hear from Pastor Horn?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, Pastor Horn, would you come forward, please, sir? And the board has no, has nothing on its agenda to take action, so if we, if you were wanting to try to take action tonight, you would need to amend the agenda, so.
Um, just to kind of clear a couple of things up. First, uh, we have not been in the process for months. Uh, we literally started this process two weeks ago. Our volunteers, just members of our church, started the work, uh, on the site. Uh, we received no phone call. What happened was that morning, we had three enforcement officers that showed up, uh, while our, our guys were working, and placed a stop-work order out, um, on-site and told us what was going on, and then we kind of started reaching out to Lyle and his department. They were helpful in helping us figure out exactly what is going on, but it took us most of that day just to figure out what was happening, uh, and to start kind of getting our questions into mind, but that literally was only two weeks ago. Uh, also, just to make sure you understand the, the full process that we've been asked to do, the city has asked us to first go through a lot aggregation process for the main four and some odd acres that the church sits on and the lot that Calvary had owned since nineteen eighty-four that sits beside it. Once that lot aggregation is approved, then we would go through the special exception process. Uh, we've asked questions, but as far as I can tell, Lyle's that still, that's my best explanation and understanding of what the process would actually be.
Yes, the two processes go hand-in-hand, because essentially, right now, one parcel of land is zone SD two for residential uses, and places of worship don't have a particular zone they're allowed in. They're allowed in any zone as long as they obtain that special exception or use exception. So in this case, when they're aggregating those two lots together, they're also having to do the special exception. The lot aggregation is a minor, since they're not building infrastructure, which is why I don't necessarily bring it up first, is because it does require board approval until the very end. So essentially, the special exception can be right at the same time as that board approval. Uh, really, they go hand-in-hand. So if you're getting a special exception done, that lot aggregation is being done within it as well, because that's.
And we, we have no trouble doing that process. We want you to know, we, we really do not. It, we have gotten caught a little bit, because the first phone call we could make was last week in between Christmas and New Years, to a civil engineer to start that process of, of getting a plat made. Our, our major concern is in the immediate, uh, zone of within two weeks, we will be overflowing, uh, and especially if we lose the capacity that we had on the grass on that lot. Uh, we, we are parking people as far away as Hospital Road and Mon Creek Park, uh, right now on Sunday mornings in the midst of that. So our concern is just parking people safely, being able to continue what we're doing. So we are asking you, Pastor Grant was asking you absolutely to amend the agenda and to cancel the stop-work order, to let us at least spread the hundred and sixty tons of limestone that were delivered before the stop-work order, uh, was put down on that day. We already had lined up with Burn's Dirt Service to have the topsoil removed, uh, and we would love to get that out of the way, so it's not, uh, just sitting there for months causing erosion issues or any of those things. Uh, we actually had someone lined up to take away even just some other debris, uh, from clearing some of the land that is just sitting there as well. So we'd love to just get it cleaned up, uh, as we walk through that process. So we are a hundred percent asking you to amend the agenda and to give us that bit of grace, we realize, uh, that that is out of order. However, we're not the only ones that sometimes ask to do things out of order, and so our commitment to you is that we are fully willing to do that process, uh, and walk it through, but in the meantime, we need to be able to park people.
Let me clarify, because I'm the one who said months, and my recollection was that Mr. Havlin came to me a number of months, months ago and indicated, and I don't know if it was you, I don't know if it was Pastor Arrender, I don't know who it was, but y'all had a discussion about lot aggregation and that you never moved forward on it, and also that there was a discussion about what you would need to do, again, a number of months ago, and so I'm not sure where that communication broke down.
And Daniel expressed that to us. We have no idea who Daniel talked with. It was not I, and it was not Pastor Arrender.
I didn't even know that the two lots were different.
Yeah, I mean, and so we, and.
Well, we talked with someone, so I'm not trying to be disingenuous in saying.
And we aren't either.
We have, we have had those conversations with someone who was affiliated, um, and I don't know who it was. Lyle, do you have any recollection?
It was a number of months ago, it was around the same time, it feels like last year, whenever they were looking at, uh, people coming in. But I don't.
Anyway, so I, I just wanted to know, I was, that, that was part of that process that we had, we had discussed, so, um, any other, anyone else wishing to inquire?
Yeah, I was just.
Alderman Beatty.
How soon can this process be done? You said both these things can be done at the same time, the lot aggregation and the exception.
The special exception is, is just dated by going before the Planning and Zoning Commission and before the Board of Aldermen, a fine approval there. Uh, then at that point, you know, if, if the special exception and that plat are approved, uh, which that plat just goes before DRC, which is the commission that's held there, there's that, at that point, then you can essentially start what would be the building permit or site planning process for them supplying information of what improvement they're making to that land, uh, because there's a difference in being allowed to make improvements and then the actual improvements themselves. So if they propose a gravel parking lot, uh, the thing might be that they're required to have concrete, and then things of that nature. So realistically, they could have it within two weeks after approval of the Board of Aldermen for a special exception, but it depends on what it is they're proposing. Uh, at this point, the reason for stop-work order is because we don't know exactly what is being proposed.
We do know what's been done, however, because there's been a double covert that was put on the backside of the lot, on the western side of the lot.
And that's not to say they haven't tried to communicate their intentions to do, it just means that we have to go by like a, a legal survey and a, and a drawn-out plan by a usually design professional, depending on the scope of their project. They have discussed a, a gravel parking lot, but we have to operate under a usually a professional design document.
Anything else, Alderman Beatty?
Yes, ma'am. Um, what are your long-term plans for the parking of that?
Look, so we are, we have grown faster than we anticipated growing, and so we are walking through a strategic process in twenty twenty-four of figuring out those long-range plans. Will, and just honestly, I, we've talked about this within our church, do we stay long-term at that site? Do we move and build somewhere else in the midst of that? And so, uh, if we stay long-term at that site on North Jackson, then we will be making plans to make significant investments in what that property is, uh, for the long haul. Uh, in the midst of it, we're, we're just trying to do the best we can, and look, I, I'm going to speak just very personally, I'm a pastor, and so the amount of hours in my day that I have to navigate these issues, there are just not that many, because it's not, it's not the main part of my job, it's not the main part of Pastor Grant's job. And, and so I, I guess I also want to say that part of what we're asking for is a little bit of a recognition of who we are as a church and a nonprofit. This is, this is not a developer. We're not a business. We are doing the best we can to make as much of a difference as we can, and we have a pretty good track record in our town of making an impact and making a difference, uh, that we feel like we can back that up a little bit, but if we have to start pulling hours and hours, uh, we are supposed to meet again with Clyde Pritchard tomorrow, uh, to begin the process, and so I'm not, I'm not trying to be disingenuous at all. Uh, we are willing to walk through that, but even if we meet with him tomorrow, it's going to take a couple of weeks at the very earliest before they can even get us a plat drawing back, uh, at which point then we've got to get to the first DRC meeting that we can on a Thursday, walk that process. I, I see no legitimate functional way that we can get the paperwork process done before the end of February or spring break. That's a huge issue in what do we do in the meantime, and especially in the ramp-up to Easter for us as a church.
How gravel is.
No, not, not, not from the audience, please. If you were coming to speak, you, you may do so when you're, when you're asked, please. Alderman Beatty, anything else?
Yes. Pastor ran that, other than the aesthetics, what that is at issue, um, you're, y'all are talking about putting a gravel park. I remember, and I, I won't make, well, I won't make comparison. When I was in school in Jackson, Mississippi College, it's back in seventy, it's been a long time ago, but Frank Pollard, does anybody remember Frank Pollard? Dr. Frank Pollard, he was pastor of Miss, of First Baptist Jackson. I was Miss College, Mississippi College, and I was Baptist, and I attended First Baptist Church Jackson faithfully and regularly, and a lot of college, a lot of students in Mississippi College, at the MCD. That church was going through horrendous, not horrendous, great, growing pains at that time. Their church is growing from about six thousand members up to seven or eight thousand members pretty quickly, pretty rapidly. I remember when all that was going on.
I remember when all that was going on, that they, I'm sure, were working with the city of Jackson under, you know, in, under regular permitting, the permitting process to add parking lots. We would park two and three blocks away. And we parked around the state Capitol, we parked on President Street, we parked all over State Street, everywhere. But we were parking two, we were young people, parking two and three blocks away to walk First Baptist Jackson. And I guess what I'm saying is, it might seem like an imposition if they have to park in the GI, Dr. Parkland, if they allow y'all to do that, or, or, or somewhere on Hospital Road, something like that. But we did it and didn't think we were being put out, it was an imposition to us to have to park way out if we, if we were not the earliest people at that church. Because they were having growing pains and then we thought that was, you know, that was, or they considered it, we considered it to be something good, and it's something good for your church. What our city is trying to do with this permitting process and with our code department and with the Planning and Zoning Board is we're trying to improve our city, the process by which we, we permit, except, you know, building permits and exceptions and things. And part of the, part of the long-term, Mayor, I'm just going to speak for myself, I guess at this point in time.
Yes, sir.
Part of the long-term goal for our city is to see the, the, us, up our game in, in the way things look. You have a beautiful church facility, physical plant there, one of the prettiest churches in this part of the state, one of the prettiest churches in the state. And what I had hoped that, that the church would have done, maybe on the front end, would have been, been to engage an architect and try to determine or try to plan long-term as to how you would, would build permanent parking, meaning curbing and asphalt and, and curved entrances and things, and submitted those plans to the city ahead of time in the, the normal permitting process. This probably would have popped up, these, this, this, this stuff that was going to need exceptions, had y'all approached us, you know what I'm saying, from the, from the get-go with that. And I just, I mean, I, I think for your church going forward, long-term, I mean, I, I don't know whether gravel parking lots or something that, I mean, that's, that's, that's this big beautiful church on, on North Jackson Street.
No, and I think long-term, we would want it to be permanent. But look, there's a far difference in with volunteer labor, we can get a crushed limestone parking lot done and done pretty well for $20,000 with the guys in our church doing it. And, and the money it would take to do the concrete down when we're not sure. And so, I mean, this was a temporary solution done in-house with volunteer labor and, and volunteers and the whole way. So 100%, I think you are correct on that, Alderman Beatty. And I think we want to do that as we are now realizing we've got to make some significant decisions quickly about, about what do we do as we continue to grow and branch out in the midst of that. We weren't trying to skirt any of those things whatsoever. We were honestly, if I'm, if I'm being just personally honest, we were trying to just manage the multitude of things that we have had to manage this year as we brought two congregations together and then saw about another 30% growth on top of those two congregations. And it's been a long list. And again, it's been a long list where we are at our heart pastors. And so, you know, we're going to make those mistakes and, and miss those things. And I, and our people have been willing to park away and, and walk, but losing the additional 30 to 40, they've been parking away and walking even with the cars we've been putting on that grass lot. Parking another 30 to 40 cars away, it, it will be a whole, a whole different thing. And, and one that I, I feel like, especially with the material that's already on the ground, is a little bit avoidable. Because I think we could spread even what's there, get moved off what's already there, and probably alleviate our capacity concerns while we run through the process with Lyle and his department.
Alderman Brooks, I think I saw your name. I'm sorry, Alderman Beatty, were you done?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
My apologies. Alderman Brooks?
Just a, a couple of things with our difference. When, when did y'all go through this merger?
We went through the merger November 6th last year was our first, our November 6th, November 2nd, it's the first Sunday of November was our first Sunday together as a church.
Last year, 2022?
Of 2022, yes, sir.
I, I went back through my emails, I couldn't, couldn't find it. But I came before I was here, I was on Planning and Zoning, and somebody with your, with the church looked me in on, on this discussion about the lot. And I don't, I don't know, I don't know who it was, but we, we had, we had a discussion. Of course, I'm like, well, I'm not a planner of own anymore, but this is what I remember. But I did direct the individual. I guess if I was in my office, maybe I could find who it was. But, but we, we did go through that, you know, the fact being that that lot was separate and that they would have to do, do some of this stuff. So somebody was, was aware back then, again, I can't, can't remember who, but that doesn't matter, you're not aware of it, you weren't aware of it. And I want to ask Mr. McCaskin, you know, we, we did do some change in, on our parking lots, and we don't actually have a, a, a parking lot that's not at use. Am I correct about that?
Yes, sir. The parking lots actually are used to find in our code and is for an SD2 zoning district. Since it's residential in nature, it straight out does not permit parking lots. Just because it's general for single, for regular homes.
Right. So, but we do, you know, another thing we changed through about gravel parking, we, we do allow crushed limestone parking with the right, because I know we did it.
My understanding is yes, and I think that there are just requirements around concrete acres and as well as possible curbing.
Right, yeah, to kind of keep himmed up, I guess.
Yes, but, but also, I, I believe when that was written, it was not intended for residential areas, so it becomes a little complex because obviously churches treat it a little differently.
Right.
And, and in a way that takes a special exception to be in a zoning district.
Yeah, yeah. So it's not, so, yeah, because it's, it's allowed, but you still have to go through that exception process.
Yes, if they were anything but a place of worship, this would not be even possible as a discussion. If it drew the place of worship, uh, used that they're able to obtain that use.
See, and again, I'm, I always have my notes in front. It seemed like maybe that, that lot, was it not part of that subdivision that you joined there?
I'm not sure. Calvary bought that lot. We look back at the deeds, 1984, I think is when Calvary purchased and took ownership of that lot. So that obviously predated Pastor Arender's time at Calvary. And so we really, we just assumed that it held the same use authorizations and exemptions that the, the rest of the property did in the midst of that. And we've reached out, I mean, we've, I think we've talked, we might even emailed you, Mr. Brooks, about the light at Kreitz, because we were trying to figure out exit, you know, at Kreitz Street and right thereafter. I mean, there've been a host of things that we've asked some questions about. So it is entirely possible that one of our guys reached out, I want you to hear me say that, and then just didn't pass those things on to us. We just don't remember, especially with that lot, any part of that go.
I understand. I, I know that somebody did, I don't know who it was, and it wasn't, wasn't you, obviously. But, but sometimes those things fall from cracks. But I was trying to remember, though, if it was part of that subdivision. And that's, that's what you've got to understand, I think, Mr. McCaskin, Mr. Havlin's kind of playing rock and hard places here, is that, that, you know, that you have to notice this stuff so that, you know, because we got to, we got to treat you fair, we also got to treat, you know, the neighbors there fair. And if that, you know, if that lot was part of that subdivision, there may be somebody that, that has a problem in it, I don't know. But that's why they have to advertise that stuff, you know? And I think you understand that. I mean, if somebody was trying to put something, you know, next to, to you guys, and, you know, you would want that too. You'd want to be noticed and have an opportunity to come up and, you know, make your, the case that, well, we don't like this, or we might go along with it, but we want to see this, you know? So, I mean, sometimes, you know, process takes a little while, but, but it has to be noticed. And, I mean, and I think we, we don't, we have, we just have to go through that process to treat everybody. That, that's some of my recollection.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Brooks. Alderman Vaughn?
Engineering question. Could we not put environmental mats down as a temporary solution until they get them? Environmental mats are used by large trucks and stuff in wet areas to access power lines and things. And there's a company, New South Mats in Jackson, that's an MSU alum. And this is specifically what it's for, is to put some kind of board down on squishy areas and it allows large machinery. I'm sure it would take care of a car, but is that a temporary solution?
I, I can't necessarily speak to the, the engineering, I could really want to speak to the use of like a temporary...
Could they set those down?
Well, I mean, as far as our code goes, it doesn't allow for the temporary usage of a gravel parking lot. But that sounds like it would be useful in a certain situation where you could, yes.
So you're saying they couldn't even put down environmental mats for a week or two till they worked through this process?
I'm just, by our, by our code, it does not allow for the use of a parking lot there until the special exception.
So it's the, it's actually, the, the land has not been approved as a parking lot?
Yes, in, in that residential area, it would never be approved to be a parking lot. It's only through the use of the place of worship that it then gets that ability to be a parking lot. Because we can't restrict the church from using the land that they have when it's already had that special exception. And basically, they're adjoining it to the place of worship so they can do things that are accessory to that place of worship.
That's the reason for the aggregation.
Yeah.
The need for the lot aggregation is to create that one big parcel.
Certainly, yeah.
And we understand that. I guess our, from our standpoint, you have to understand that we've been parking people on that lot for months now. And, and, and we, we 100% don't deny anything that Alderman Beatty has asked or that Lyle and his department have asked, but yet no one has reached out in the months that we've been parking people on that lot, week in and week out, and, and brought any of those things to our mind that we thought we had a problem. And so, look, we, we're in the wrong. Like, we're not, I think even Grant said that, like, we know we're in the wrong. However, I even think about the story of T-Mobile a couple of weeks ago in the paper. We know we're not the only ones that sometimes get in the wrong. And we also feel like there's some precedence of this board granting people the ability to, having done something, come back and do the paperwork and the process right in the midst of it. And we kind of feel like we were right in the middle of that, and we would love the chance to at least make it decent while we do that same process. I, that, that's our question to talk, and I think fairness is a very good thing to talk about in the midst of that. We feel like that might be a fair way to address kind of where we are.
Alderman Sisdrunk, I'll work my way down.
Okay.
I, I'd like to say that there's a fairly substantial difference between an awning color as a variance exception and a fairly permanent change to the use of land without going through the process.
That's true.
And understanding the input from the neighbors. I, I own the vacant lot next to my house, and I, I can tell you that if I did something that benefited hundreds of people but generated that much traffic in my neighborhood, there would be people who would complain about it. And so we need to be able to hear from the neighborhood that, that their thoughts about, about this. I, I find that we make our worst decisions when we make rushed decisions. And so I think the important thing is that we go through the process. You've, you've dealt with this for a year now, and I don't think two months more is, is going to slow the growth of your church. I think your church is doing good things, and, and I think you'll, you'll be able to make it through this relatively short window. But, but I would hate for us to start down a path and then come back and tell you that, that what you're doing is not acceptable at all.
I understand that. We just, we've now lost the use of a lot that we were putting 30 to 40 cars on, and now we've lost the use of it altogether. And that, that is different than if we were just waiting to use it and figuring out. That compounds the problem on our side.
Vice Mayor Ferk, I'm sorry, Alderman Sisdrunk, was it?
That's it.
Vice Mayor Ferkins, anything?
Mayor, I had not planned to add anything, but just for purposes of the record, I'll be very brief, and I've been hearing these arguments, comments of this nature and can now in excess of 30 years. And just to be fair and consistent with every requesting party, I believe in strict compliance. Whenever I'm in a court of law, arguing a case on behalf of the state of Mississippi in 1997, the justices held me to the law, which I knew that they would, and I won on behalf of this great state. When I practiced law in the various courts in this state, the federal court, the Chancery Court, the Circuit Court, and other courts in this state, the judges expect strict compliance. They expect, expect me to have a superior knowledge base, and I'm going to have this superior knowledge base. And I just would like to respectfully inform the petitioner that I'm going to always be consistent. And when I'm consistent, I will be always viewed as treating persons fair and equally. And I will always be viewed as treating persons who are similarly situated similarly. So that is the best approach. Majority of my colleagues have, in their own words, said that tonight. These rules were designed to be followed. They were designed to be adhered to, and they have a very important governmental purpose. So Mayor, given that you recognized the vice mayor tonight, I want to say thank you. And just in closing, is that if this matter were before me now for a vote on the record, I would vote against amending the agenda. And if the agenda was in fact amended, I would have to just vote no against the request because I believe in strict enforcement of our rules. And with that being said, I'm going to respectfully yield the floor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Alderman Vaughn?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would like to amend the agenda, but to, to, to remove the stop work order, give them time just to clean it, clean it back up. As he said, they got a lot of stuff that they can just clean back up and make it better. I, you know, maybe in my past, but I would like to amend the agenda so that we can, you know, remove this, uh, way this stop work order, let them clean it back up and make it decent so we can come in.
Okay. Let's, let's be clear, because I think when he says clean it back up, he doesn't mean he's going to remove the dirt and the piles of dirt and gravel that are there. He means they're going to spread them out. So he's going to, and correct me if I'm wrong, he's going to spread them out to allow that to be a parking area while they try to go through the process. Am I correct?
Well, at the very least, we would like to remove the pile of topsoil that was, that was scraped and the tree debris that was left over from the cleanup. I, I would be amenable to using the environmental mat approach on the mud that's there right now in the meantime. I, I think this board stands on iffy grounds if after a year of us parking on that lot, you say that there is no option of us parking on that lot. And I think even publicly, this board stands on iffy ground, making that statement without a phone call or a word to the church. So I would be open to using mats, I would be open to exploring other options. I would for sure love, I think Grant would too, to clean up the topsoil and the debris so that the property looks managed and looks just even presentable as you drive by. And so at the very least, I'd like to do that. But, but we would, we would really love to be able to do what we've been doing for a year now, which is parking people on that lot, even if it means we can't do it with the crushed limestone as, as we work that process. I like to say we would be open to what Alderman Vaughn suggested or any of those other things.
Okay, let me address the iffy ground. Our code enforcement doesn't work on Sundays. We, we work sometimes on Saturdays, but not on Sundays. And so the way it came to our attention is that suddenly all this dirt appeared on a lot that should not have dirt on it. And so you're, what you're asking to do is continue to park on a lot that was never intended for parking. And so we ultimately, you can speed 75 miles an hour for a year and never get caught, but then, in this case, it's something that came to our attention. And so that's how, that's how we learned about it, is that suddenly there was a change on that lot that, that driving by, you go, that doesn't, what's going on? You know? So it wasn't that, it wasn't that we were ignoring it, it was that we didn't know about it. You didn't know about this, and, and we certainly didn't know about that. So let me, let me be, be clear on that. But you have a motion, you want to make a motion to amend the agenda. Let's see if, let's see if we can gather enough votes to do that. I have a motion from Alderman Vaughn to amend the agenda to include a motion for a stop work order, is that correct, or for a lifting of the stop work order?
Right.
Let's, if you're going to do that, let's make sure that, well, I'll tell you what, let's first see if it, it goes through with the amending of the agenda, okay? So I have a motion from Alderman Vaughn to amend the agenda. Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
I need to know what specifically, what, when we talk, we talk about the lift, we I need to know what specifically, what, when we talk, we talking about the lift, we just, we talking about amending the?
Well, right now, all we're doing is talking about amending the agenda to include the discussion of the Bridgeway Church Stop Work Order.
This is just all done for discussion?
Yes, further, further discussion, yes.
I see.
All right. So I have a motion and a second from Alderman Beatty. And let's, let's do this, well, all, all those in favor of amending the agenda to include a motion or to include a discussion of the stop work order and a potential motion on the stop work order to be lifted. All those in favor, please, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, so Alderman Rupp, Alderman Beatty, and Alderman Vaughn, okay? All right, well, we have six today, so guess what? All right. Sorry about that. All right. So all those not in favor of amending the agenda to reflect that additional motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, we have a tie, and I am the tiebreaker. And in this case, I'm going to vote against amending the agenda. So in that case, the amended, the agenda will not be amended. I think we've had a discussion. I think there's an understanding of where we need to go. And what I will promise to you is that we will expedite it to the best of our ability. We will get with, Mr. Havlin unfortunately is out for a couple of days with flu. But Mr. McCaskin is very confident, and we will move forward expeditiously. And potentially, there might be an opportunity to call up, a special call P and Z to bring it forward sooner. But we will work our way through that and promise that we will do our very best to move it along rapidly, okay?
We appreciate that. Thank you so much for your time tonight.
And we will be constrained by publication issues. But beyond that, we will work through that, that site plan process if you can, if you can move your folks along, okay?
Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you very much. So we are at, we are at the point of calling for a work session, so let me do that. In accordance with the notice required under Mississippi Code annotated 254113, the board will have a work session on Friday, the 12th of January, 2024 at 11:00 a.m. That meeting will be held at City Hall in the second floor conference room located at 110 West Main. Notice should be provided of the work session within one hour of the meeting. By posting such notice at City Hall, the notice should be made a part of the minutes of the board meeting. The work session will be an open public meeting of the city of Starkville, and the public press are invited to attend. Do I have a motion to recess until January the 16th? Thank you, Alderman Vaughn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Beatty. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you.